Regular meeting of the City Council is held in person on Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice this meeting was posted on May 21st, 2024, at 3:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselors absent, Counselor Jurzlo. Counselor Hapworth presided. Counselor Varela moved to dispense the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. President Hapworth requested that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Watsonfeld.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to acknowledge that Counselor Sargent has joined us here tonight, former Counselor Sargent. The Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg or fishing place where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle the legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or question and answer period. Sign up must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The President shall, depending on the number of speakers, set the time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide by. We have three folks signed up here today, so each will get the full three minutes. Up first is Ben Shalopp.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me today. I just want to start out by talking, we just came from Flying Saucer down the street, and one of the things I do love most about this city, and you guys all know that I love the city greatly, is that we are the only city in the North Shore and probably one of the only cities in Massachusetts, and maybe only the only city in Massachusetts, to have one, at least one, and arguably two statues to union members erected in this city. Of course, I'm talking, the arguable one is Roger Conit, who was a member of the Salters Guild. That one's a little arguable, but the one where there's no arguments is our sister, Elizabeth Montgomery Samantha down the corner. She was a member of both SAG and AFTRA, and her father was president of AFTRA, and she was a very active union member, so she would be very pleased that we would be here today. You have a resolution before you today impacting actors working in the creative economy, and as that statue is a testament to, the creative economy brings millions, and has probably over the years since she was alive, brought billions into the city over time, if you could somehow compound that. But there's less glamorous part about working in the creative economy, and that is the fact that actors struggle to make healthcare, they struggle to be paid as employees, they struggle to make a living off it, when they are competing against businesses that, generally speaking, hire non-union performers who are being paid under the table or illegally as independent contractors. We have to follow the law, and the law, when you think about hiring an actor for a commercial, they are given a time to report to a location, they are given a clear set of instructions of what they're going to be doing that day. They are literally reporting to somebody who's called a director, who is directing them in the course of their business. Like any other worker, they need to be paid as employees, but too often they're paid as independent contractors. And so the resolution that we have before you today is asking that we send that message to the local business community. We don't need a new law passed. The existing laws apply to us already. What we do need is for people to recognize that people working as actors are workers, they are employees, and they should be paid as such. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben. I was wondering who that second union member was, so it's good to hear that Roger was one of them. And one of the coolest names a founder could have is Roger. Andrew Justin Smith.
Hi, folks, thanks so much. I get my full name, it's like I'm in trouble. But that actually goes to show that we are, we're mini businesses in ourselves. Actors have to use a trademark name. I can't be Andrew Smith because there's another Andrew Smith out there in SAG-AFTRA, and so I'm Andrew Justin Smith because that's the name of my business. And we're running our own little small businesses right here, many of us out of Salem, alongside a lot of you and alongside a lot of the people that live here. I'm here today with Matt, Todd, Chelsea, Duncan, James. We lost Gio, but we are, we are all actors and we live in the area. We're real live actors right in front of you. We're not millionaires, we're not famous, probably don't recognize us, maybe around town, but we work locally, and we work and we live locally, and we want to be treated the same way as any other worker. And so we're here with this resolution today to talk about the fact that many local businesses here make commercials. They make advertisements, you know, small scale stuff, and we have a contract for that. We actually have a way to have local actors work on those small commercials, smaller commercials, for lower rates, because we understand the needs for small businesses, and we understand that we want to be able to help that out as well. There's a solidarity there, there's a unity there. And so our union makes that effort, and so what we're simply asking is that we remind these local businesses that we are here, all they have to do is contact us, reach out, maybe even four out of five times, it's, you know, out of their price range, let's say, right? We always talk in advertising, the like four out of five dentist thing, what about that fifth dentist? We just want that fifth person, because maybe there's somebody that we can contract with, we can appear in their commercials, we can add an air of legitimacy, we can add an air of professionalism, and really help those small businesses thrive. So small business to small business, that's what we're trying to do is connect that. And so I'm here as an actor before you, my friends and colleagues, to ask that you support this resolution and remind local businesses that acting is a job, and we're here to do that job, and we would love to do it with local businesses here in Salem. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Andrew. And I'll note that the SAG-AFTRA folks stayed just under the three minutes, each of them, so great job, guys. Up next is Counselor Sargent. And Counselor Sargent, you missed a real opportunity to put smiley faces at all of our desks here today. A little disappointed.
Thank you, Counselors, Council President, Madam City Clerk. I'm here to speak about the proposed changes to the B1 zones of Salem to allow for B2 uses, business two uses, but concerns we most is allowing restaurants with liquor licenses into the B1 zone citywide. I believe that this change will change B1 zoning at the Salem into B2 zoning, in most cases for good. Restaurants without liquor licenses are currently allowed in the B1 zone, but they are usually smaller operations that close around 9:00 or 10:00 at night. Once you allow liquor licenses, they're allowed to stay open until 1:00 in the morning, and they'll have a larger impact on their neighbors in the abutting residential zone. Some B2 zones, which allow restaurants with liquor licenses, are but residential zones, but all B1 zones in Salem are by residential zones. There's a much larger chance of disturbing neighbors. I read on the agenda that this is being considered because we currently have restaurants with liquor licenses in later hours near residential zones. Not many of them are older, been around for years, before some of our recent zoning changes, and I would say that this is And I would say that this is not without issues. Their neighbors have learned to live with them. Please don't repeat mistakes that were made many years ago. Allow B1 zones to remain neighborhood-friendly. Growing up, I had two leather factories on my street in North Salem. They went out of business and life got a lot better. We didn't use their existence as a reason to put factories in other neighborhoods. Please be careful with this. Get plenty of public input, maybe form a review committee. We only get this chance once. It's only one shot, and if we get it wrong, there will last some effects on our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's reappointments of the two following people to the Park and Rec Commission.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that to be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves this to be held under the rules. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments or reappointments?
We have the mayor's reappointment of Ziggy Hartfelder of 10 Monroe Street to the Sam Culture Council for a new three-year term to expire June 14th, 2027.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that to be received and filed.
Counselor Varela moves this to be received and filed. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to move out of order to page 22 to take the road races up while Ms. Sarah Stanley from HAWK is here tonight.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves to go out of order to page 22, seeing no objection. Page 22.
I didn't hear which one.
Did you say 22?
Okay. Sorry, I spoke really quickly. Page 22, the two road races. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
We have the following two road races. A request from Healing Abuse Working for Change HAWK to hold the walk-run for HAWK in use of city streets on June 9th, 2024, and a request from the YMCA of North Shore Salem YMCA to hold the Witch City 5K Road Race in use of city streets on October 12th, 2024.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. As the community here knows, these are both wonderful events, and we're happy to support them every year. We do have Ms. Sarah Stanley here with us tonight, who's the Executive Director of Healing Abuse Working for Change, otherwise known as HAWK, which is an incredibly important organization in our town. And I am just happy to welcome her. If she has any questions, we could suspend the rules to allow her to speak.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves to suspend the rules.
After I make a motion to...
Motion?
That these be granted.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves this to be granted under discussion. Move to suspend the rule.
Now I'm going to move to suspend.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection. Ms. Staley.
Only if there was, I'm here if there's any questions whatsoever. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Watsonfelt's motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries.
President Hapworth, I now motion that we go back to original order. Thank you.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves to go back to page 6, seeing no objection. It's going to take a second for me to get there. Communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $17,500 is hereby transferred and appropriated from the receipts reserve funds listed below to the Department of Public Services burial account.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. This request came from Ray Joden from DPS. The funds will replenish funds used for the burial services and daily operations for Green Lawn Cemetery to continue for fiscal year 2025. It's a standard request that comes through with the council a couple of times a year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Merkel's motion for adoption, the sum of $17,500 be hereby transferred and appropriated from the receipts reserve fund to the Department of Public Services burial account. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $14,173 be hereby appropriated from the golf course receipts reserve appropriation account and transferred to the following park and rec golf course account below for the costs associated with clubhouse maintenance.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. This transfer of funds from the golf course receipts reserved account to the parks and rec golf course accounts is to cover the costs associated with clubhouse maintenance, specifically the clubhouse carpet tile replacement and two large support columns that are rotting and need replacement.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Merkel's motion for adoption, the sum of $14,073 and zero cents be hereby appropriated to the golf course receipts reserved appropriation fund. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $9,430 is hereby appropriated to the following count in the capital improvement fund below for repairs to the gangway and float system at Charlotte Fortin Park.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. As stated, these funds are to repair the gangway and float system at Charlotte Fortin Park. This request came from the harbor master, Bill McHugh. It sustains significant damage, which was from severe weather and the tide events over the winter, and Bill has obtained a proposal from North Shore Marine and is requesting these funds to ensure that the work is done and repair is made, and the park feature is available for use this season. And more information is available in the backup documentation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Merkel's motion, the sum of $9,430 be appropriated to the CIP for repairs to the gangway. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $8,862 is hereby appropriated from the golf course receipts reserved for appropriation account and transferred to the following park and rec golf course account for costs associated with the golf cart rentals to extend the contract for the month of June.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. This is a request for a transfer of funds from the golf course receipts reserve account to the parks and rec golf course accounts to extend the golf cart rentals into and through June. It goes into the parks and rec contracted services account. You all might remember that this came before us, because the electric carts are waiting for National Grid to finish the charging stations, which they are behind in completing. So for the last couple of months, you know, they've had to contract out the golf course, you know, to be ADA compliant and accommodate people that are not able to walk the course. And this is taking a frustratingly longer length of time than was expected. And yes, and the goal is to get the course through this fiscal year, getting through June, and they expect it to be completed. And also, just of note, they are collecting more funds by having the rental carts than not having them. And there is also a timing challenge with this as well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor, oops, sorry, Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. Can you explain what that means, the timing, what you just ended with?
Yes, because they have to get the contract to extend it through June in place, instead of if this went to committee and we ended up not being able to process it for three more weeks, because they keep hoping it's supposed to ongoingly be completed, and it's not. So what I mean by, you know, there's a timing challenge, is that if it went to committee, you know, they would lose the window of opportunity to keep it going through June. That's what I meant.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Could the Chair of A&amp;F remind me if this is the second or third one of these appropriations in this amount, please?
Counselor Merkel.
Yes, this is the second time it's come through, but if memory serves me, the first one was for a couple of months. It wasn't one month. We did through early spring. There was one when they knew it wasn't, when they wanted to open for the season, they weren't going to have the carts. So they did one through May that they thought would make it by the deadline that was supposed to have it finished, and now that has not happened. So they're hoping a one-month extension does it, if that answers your question.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Apologies for the multiple questions, President. Through you to the Chair of A&amp;F. And will National Grid be reimbursing the city for any of the fines due to the delay?
Counselor Merkel.
That's a good question. That's a good question, and I'd be happy to, because I did have a conversation with Trish from the Director of Parks and Rec about this and how frustrated they've been. And if you're amenable to me following up on that and getting back to the council, I'd like to answer, ask that question myself.
Counselor Prozniewski? Counselor Prozniewski.
Thank you. Just so the public understands, the golf course was supposed to get electric carts beginning of this year, and the electricity was supposed to be installed, and that didn't happen. Why it didn't happen is still, there's a lot of finger pointing going on. But the bottom line was because the electricity wasn't installed in time, the golf course had to rent gas carts. And the first appropriation that we did was for $15,000, and now we're doing another almost $9,000. So we have nearly $24,000 that's coming out of the golf course receipts that should have gone back to the city, but instead it's going, it's being used for a mistake. And I think it's important that the city find out exactly what happened, why it happened, and if National Grid is responsible, then we should be trying to recoup some of, recoup that mistake, because this is a $25,000 error, which is really unacceptable, because somebody dropped the ball. So I'm just expressing my frustration, as I'm sure a lot of other people understand, and I hope that this gets rectified quickly and we don't come in for another appropriation for another month or two of gas carts, because things are slow, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Prozniewski. And I'll also, just for clarity, the golf course funds come from receipts that they collect at the golf course, and so the funds are coming from their receipts reserve account, just for clarity. That's where the funds are transferred from. It is what they collect. And again, they do collect more having the carts than not, but I appreciate these points. I totally agree. It is still money, and I am happy to pass that question along if there's a possibility, or if they will be pursuing funds from National Grid for the delay.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Merkel's motion to transfer the sum of $8,862 to the golf course contracted services account, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to accept the donation from the state of, I'm sorry, Gia Magliocchio, anybody? Milacchio, thank you, in the amount of $15,000 to the Council on Aging Department.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Yes, this donation is very much appreciated and will be used to support senior programming and events. Argia Magliaccio is a former participant at the Council on Aging. She attended events years ago with her sister, and we want to thank her and her family for their generosity. I know as a volunteer how important these events are.
Any further discussion? Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I have to say that this is a very humbling donation, and I would just personally like to thank the state of, and the family of the Magliaccio family. This is a huge, huge donation. Thank you so much.
Further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption, to accept the donation of the state of Argia Magliaccio in the amount of $15,000, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to accept the donation from Eastern Bank in the amount of $1,000 to the Council on Aging Department.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
I think we need to, do we need to suspend the rules there, Madam City Clerk?
We don't. Okay, it's just adopted. Yes, I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. Yes, we thank Eastern Bank for their generosity in supporting the Council on Aging's Salem Senior Day, and the Salem Senior Day is June 1st at Forest River Park from 11:00 to 3:00. It's going to be a great event. They'll be recognizing older adults in our community for accomplishments, and it's going to be a good time, so please help spread the word. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to accept the donation from Eastern Bank in the amount of $1,000, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the opioid settlement special stabilization fund, as well as the dedication of revenues thereto, is hereby terminated as authorized by Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023 and by general law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. As you all are probably familiar with, Massachusetts entered into the opioid settlement with the opioid industry, and we set up an opioid settlement special stabilization fund to comply with Mass. general law. And since that time, the state now allows municipalities that have or will receive funds to place them in a special revenue fund. The proceeds can then be expended for the purposes outlined in the settlement agreements, and there is additional information in the backup documentation from Anna Friedman, our Finance Director, and the Department of Revenue. This is a housekeeping measure, because the original protocol for how they were going to move these funds to municipalities created barriers for use. And I'd also like to mention, the Health Department has recently created an opioid settlement funds survey, which is available on the city's website. They're looking for the public's input on how to best use the funding, and with a focus on addressing disparities in existing services and improve health equity for those disadvantaged by wealth, race, and stigma, and for which I appreciate. Please visit the website for more information on the allowed uses of the funds, and which I thought, found kind of exciting, is currently we have in the funds over $500,000 now, and more funds are expected. And also, as I was, you know, talking to Anna, and I had talked to our Health Director about this, we can expect updates from the city, too, as this moves forward as well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Merkel's motion regarding the opioid settlements stabilization fund, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor. I'll note that Counselor Varela has recused himself.
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to business neighborhood zoning.
Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the planning board to schedule a joint public hearing.
Counselor Morsello moves to refer to the planning board to schedule a joint public hearing, under discussion.
Thank you, President. This is an update to the B1 zone. As the mayor said in the cover letter, B1 zones are kind of a transitional space between residential and commercial. And in this case, I think that these changes make a certain amount of sense. They include indoor commercial recreation, which is proposed to be through the ZBA, restaurant with alcoholic beverages, again, through the ZBA, the addition of grocery stores to retail uses, and that would be by right, small family daycare, again, by right, and home occupation businesses, and that would be through the ZBA.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Morsello's motion to refer to the planning board to schedule a joint public hearing, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Note that Counselor Varela has rejoined us. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. In the year 2024, an ordinance...
In the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 75 of Article 5A, be amended by inserting the following. Essex Street parking prohibitions towing zone resident sticker zone C color green, number 373 23, 2 through 390 Essex Street to be included to obtain resident sticker parking permits, but no visitor passes shall be issued. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by the city charter. And I move that this be referred to the Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. This body has heard me crow a lot about resident parking in Ward 2. And I think that, though I appreciate the deliberation that has gone on in the Traffic and Parking Commission and the information provided by Director Katsarsky from the Traffic and Parking Department here at the city, I think that it's important that we take a step back every time we get one of these exception requests and we look at the, frankly, the problem holistically and have a robust committee-based discussion about whether or not our resident parking program is effective in its current form and the implications of making exceptions and including additional addresses and zoning, zoning areas.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Counsel Merkel? Counsel Merkel. I thought you raised your hand for further discussion. No, I'm sorry. So on Counsel, on Counsel Watsonfeld's motion for, for to send to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, I say, assume co-posted?
To the body's pleasure. I'm fine either way. Does anyone?
On Counsel Watsonfeld's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. City of Salem, in the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic be it ordained by the City Council on the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 51, parking prohibited on certain streets is hereby amended by repealing the following. Story Street parking prohibited on certain streets southerly side from Jefferson Avenue to a west, in a westerly direction for a distance of 150 feet, and replacing it with Story Street parking prohibited on certain streets northerly side from Jefferson Avenue in a westerly direction for a distance of 112 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage.
Counsel Morcello moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion.
Thank you, President. This was an interesting one. There was some parking enforcement done in that area around St. Anne's Church, and the cars that were parked on Story Street were all ticketed. When I went to look at the ordinances, the signs were on the wrong side of the street, and all of the signs said that the, there was no parking on this side, when in fact it was only for a certain amount, it was only for 150 feet. The ordinance goes back to the 1960s, and the residents have been proceeding as if it was only 150 feet on the northerly side, not the southerly side, because that's where the signs are. So we're just changing it to reflect what is actually happening there and changing the 150 to 112. Don't really know what the history is of it, but this, this actually just makes it as it is today, and the signs will be replaced to, to delimit it exactly instead of saying this, this side.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Morcello's motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Resolution, creative economy. Whereas the creative economy is vital to the continued success of Salem as a tourist destination, our local business community, and the economic well-being of our region; whereas actors, artists, and other creative professionals vital to the success of our creative economy are workers whose employment adds real value to our local community and economy; whereas like workers everywhere, actors, artists, and other creative professionals deserve a living wage, access to health care, OSHA protection, sick leave, overtime protections, and all other benefits granted to employees; whereas all too often actors, artists, and other creative professionals are intentionally misclassified as independent contractors to deny them these benefits; whereas under Massachusetts law, employers who misclassify employees as independent contractors may face both civil and criminal charges for committing wage theft; whereas wage theft is the most common form of theft in America and costs the Commonwealth of Massachusetts an estimated $1 billion annually in lost revenue; whereas the City of Salem has an obligation to ensure fair and equitable employment practices both within our municipal workforce and those businesses and organizations we contract with. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Salem not only opposes the misclassification actors, artists, and other creative professionals as independent contractors, but also actively supports efforts to organize actors, artists, and other working creative professionals to achieve a living wage, health care, and the basic protections employees are entitled to under the law in Massachusetts. Therefore, be it further resolved that the City of Salem strongly encourages both its local departments and private businesses that the city contracts with to engage with local labor organizations when engaging the services of an actor, artist, or other working creative professionals when seeking to commission public service announcements, commercials, training videos, and other forms of media in order to both support the workers of our local creative economy and ensure compliance with Massachusetts law. Upon ratification, a copy of this resolution shall be posted on the city's website, sent to all departments, businesses the city regularly contracts with, and included in all future RFPs. And I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counsel Davis moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I feel incredibly honored to be bringing this forward, and I wanted to thank Benjamin Shalopp and Andrew Smith for getting it in front of us tonight. I don't talk a whole lot about my experience in the music industry, you know, part of the creative economy, in part because of a lot of the painful experiences that I had in an industry that's rampant with exploitation and abuse and financial abuse and sexual harassment and being treated like your work isn't legitimate work. You know, so this is a, a resolution that's, you know, personal to me and my experiences. I also have firsthand experience being classified as an independent contractor, as an Uber driver, Grubhub driver, Lyft driver. I did it all, you name it. You know, and when you are giving people rides during a pandemic and you don't have health insurance, you really feel the full weight of not being an employee and not having those protections. So I think this is really important. I think it's really important for us to say as a community, not only that we support workers and their right to organize for better working conditions, but when we say that we support workers, that that absolutely includes workers in the creative economy. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And I think it's Austin Justin Smith. I'm very supportive of this. People heard me talk about classification as an issue with tour guides. We passed the wage theft ordinance. Subsequently, we have two trainings that were done by the Attorney General, open to the public, one for employers and one for employees or people who should be employees. And within those trainings, which are mostly about hours and overtime, there's a whole component about classification. So I think it's really important. This is not to unionize people, it's to create a situation where even like a one-time job of the person is considered an employee, and I understand that it's really easy to do that. I do want to say this one thing. So I support the resolution, but resolutions don't mandate departments to do things. We passed the wage theft ordinance. We did not mandate every department watch the trainings or participate or every company that we work with. So I'm going to provide a friendly amendment that we strike on the last paragraph after the city's website, the portion that says sent to all departments, businesses the city regularly contracts with, and included in all future RFPs.
Counsel Cohen makes a motion to amend, to remove everything after sent to all, sorry, everything after city's website in the last paragraph, seconded by Counsel Stott. Under discussion. Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, on the amendment from Counsel Cohen, all those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment carries. On the motion from Counselor Davis, any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I also want to say that I appreciate this coming in front of us tonight. I think it complements our efforts and the work to support fair practices for workers and particularly for our creative community. That's so, so important here in Salem. Thank you.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Also, as a sort of former member of the creative economy, I will say I think protecting workers' rights and classifying them as employees is an incredibly important part of, of our necessary movement to pay artists what they are worth. Art is, by and large, grossly underappreciated until it disappears, and then suddenly every cry, everyone cries and wonders where it went. And unfortunately, even coming out of the strike this last fall, we're not seeing a lot of forward movement in how outside of unions artists are paid and treated and considered. So I appreciate that particular part of this. A personal note to my friend, Mr. Shalopp. I am such a supporter of unions. I am so, I love SAG-AFTRA. I think the work that, that the union does is incredibly important to ensure quality of life. I wish it was a little easier to join, that's all, that's all. There's a high barrier for some of us out here, friends. If anyone has ever taken the time to read the, the membership requirements of the SAG-AFTRA Union, it's, it's like, get a SAG job and then be in the union and then get another one. And you're like, but I'm not in the union. How do I do that? So just a personal appeal as a former actor myself, who's done a number of independent contract roles because of a gross underpayment. Thank you for all you do and anything you can continue to do to protect artists and our community. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. As amended, I'm sorry, on the, on the resolution for the creative economy as amended, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. Maybe not. Look, it's on. On the resolution for the creative economy as amended, we have, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. A resolution for June as Pride Month. Whereas in the month of June for over 50 years, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, aromantic, and agender people across the country have commemorated and memorialized the anniversary of the Christopher Street Uprisings, of which the Stonewall Uprising is the most known, a pivotal moment in LGBTQIA+ history. And whereas June was first historically and civically designated as Gay Pride Month by President Clinton in June of 20, of 2000, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to memorialize members of the LGBTQIA+ community who have been lost to us and who are still dying every day from the AIDS epidemic and the fallout ripple effects of those terrible days, from hate and violence, from suicide, and the perils of living on the streets when young people are neglected and excommunicated from their families and communities. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQIA+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And Pride Month is a life-affirming opportunity to celebrate our diversity and bring awareness and strong allyship to the ongoing struggles of the LGBTQIA+ community, especially at this time of hostile legislation in parts of our nation and increasing legal and bodily threats to the dignity, humanity, and safety of transgender and non-binary people in America. And whereas these times in particular are seeing increasing attacks politically and physically on trans individuals, including trans children and youth, which demand action, allyship, and advocacy in support of trans lives. And whereas Salem has long been a community of diversity, acceptance, and inclusion, and acknowledges that Salem's LGBTQIA+ residents make great contributions to all aspects of life in Salem as business owners, artists, public and private leaders, educators, doctors, lawyers, civil servants, volunteers, and more. And whereas Salem wishes to honor the important history of the LGBTQIA+ liberation movement, which includes the history and ongoing fight for equitable treatment in health care, fair and equal legal rights, justice, and accurate education of the history and lives of the LGBTQIA+ community. I have the wrong page. And whereas Salem wishes to acknowledge, support, and actively work to advance the rights of the broadly intersectional diversity of our community here in our city of peace, to ensure all citizens experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the City of Salem is once again raising the inclusivity flag on Sunday, June 2nd, in downtown Salem, painting crosswalks in Salem with pride colors, date to be determined, and serving as host for the North Shore Pride Parade as means of showing support for the LGBTQIA+ community and to celebrate our diversity and shared humanity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Salem in partnership with his Honored Mayor Dominic Pengalo, hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in Salem, Massachusetts, and encourages all people to share in the pride of our LGBTQIA+ neighbors. And I move that this be adopted by roll call vote.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Not from me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Yes, no, this, this says it all. I, I really don't have any, anything to add because this is beautifully said. I do want to mention that the pride flag raising on June 2nd is at noon. And I, I just, as reading this, just wonder if in the third paragraph and the last, when it says all citizens experience equality, I just didn't know if maybe we wanted to consider all community members or residents or just, just, just a very tiny change there. But I, I always appreciate seeing this come in, and I look forward to June, and thank you.
Were you wanting to make an amendment there, Counsel Merkel?
I just wanted to check with Counsel Watsonfeld first.
Friendly amendments.
Because she's bringing it in, so whatever she thinks is best. I wanted to take.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What is the, can we be clear on the page that we're on here?
Yeah, can you help me? Yes, it's page 14, and the second line, to ensure all citizens experience equality.
So I was just, so I motioned, at least that's on mine.
Oh my God, it's, it must be in front of me. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So ensure all people, all people, community members, you know, all people. Okay. Yes, so I. People in Salem?
I motioned for.
Okay.
I motioned for a friendly amendment to just change, make that small change to people.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for an amendment to change the word citizens to people.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Morcello. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. On the main motion, any further, Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth and Counsel Watsonfeld for reading it and, and your efforts as a board member of Project Out, which works to make sure that trans, non-binary, and queer people can be their authentic selves. I just want to say, if you can't understand why your trans friends are scared right now, then you don't have a trans friend. You just know one. And even in our community, which is so welcoming, trans people, especially trans people of color, are regularly in danger. So I just want to mention that as part of what we're doing. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on adoption of the resolution as amended. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. Thank you. On the resolution for June Pride Month as amended, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor and one absent. in favor and one absent, the matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Resolution...
Waive the reading.
Counsel Cohen, Counsel Varela moves to waive the reading, seeing no objection. Counsel Cohen.
I move that we adopt this by roll call vote, but before we do, I am going to...
Just real quick, so Counsel Cohen moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I am going to submit to the council a series of amendments, and I think we'll be clear why, as I read through the resolution from the beginning. I'm striking the first paragraph, and the second paragraph, "whereas," and then I'm striking, "from Congress has played a vital role through passing unanimously," so it reads, "whereas on April 20th, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed the National Observation of the Month of May recognized in the Jewish-American community, and whereas since 2006, Presidents Bush, Obama, Trump, and Biden all issued proclamations for Jewish-American Heritage Month, which celebrates Jewish-Americans and encourages all people of the United States to learn more about Jewish heritage and the contributions of Jewish people throughout history of the United States. And whereas it's critical to increase awareness of Jewish-American contributions dating back to the founding of the United States, we much tell the positive story of Jewish contributions to the United States and the world, where generations of Jewish-Americans have made significant contributions to the arts, entertainment, culinary traditions, sports, science, technology, military, government, business, other fields to help shape our nation's history. And I'm striking the next paragraph, which starts, "whereas Vera Rubin," I'm striking the next paragraph, which says, "whereas Jewish-American athletes," and then I'm continuing, "whereas Jewish-American women have made significant contributions to American politics and activism, including Ernestine Rose, a Jewish immigrant who raised her voice to resist slavery and fight for women's suffrage, and Florence Page Khan, the first Jewish woman member of Congress and first woman to serve on the House Military Affairs Committee, and whereas Jewish-Americans long advocated for the education of all, including Julius Rosenwald, who partnered with Booker T. Washington to invest in the education of black students and built thousands of schools for black students in 15 states in the South. And whereas the Jewish community has long been involved in the civil rights movement as Henry Moskowitz joined the civil rights activists such as W. A. B. Webb Dubois and Ida B. Wells to found the National Association for the Van Swinburne Color People in 1909. And whereas Jack Greenberg argued against segregation in Brown v. Board of Education as co-counsel to Thurgood Marshall and succeeded Marshall as director, counsel of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund." And I'm striking the next two paragraphs and inserting the following. "Whereas Sam Zoll of Salem, who served in the Korean War in the U.S. Navy while a teacher at Danvers High from '58 to '62, he became a Salem City Councilor from '58 to '66. He was the state representative of Salem for '65 to '69. Sam then was elected mayor, and during his second term was appointed District Court Justice, and in 1974, the presiding justice, and then in '76, Chief Justice of the District Court. As mayor, he helped preserve the historic downtown, secured the land for Pickering Wharf, and took back Winter Island from the feds. He was my friend, or our friend, and treated everyone the same." I'm also inserting, "whereas today, Michael Corley, a black Jewish resident, who serves, who does constituent services for our city, and while president of his class at Salem State, initiated the conversation that resulted in Viking Hall being renamed at the Charlotte Forten." And then I continue, "whereas with antisemitism on the rise in our country fueled by the spread of hatred, disinformation, and Holocaust distortion, this resolution both honors Jewish-American heritage and sends a powerful message of solidarity and support to Jewish-Americans across the country. By educating ourselves in Jewish history and culture, we deepen our understanding of America's diversity and reaffirm our commitment to combating hate and prejudice in all our forms." And I strike the next paragraph in its entirety, and the last paragraph, and be it further result, including, and be it further resolved that the city make this resolution of a matter, as a matter of record of these proceedings, and then delete the final portion of sending it to a couple of organizations.
Thank you, Counsel Cohen. Thank you for your work on this, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. As a council, we regularly acknowledge the heritage of people who comprise our community. And when we do, we acknowledge the contributions they make to our economy and culture. The original resolution had nothing about Salem residents, the people in Salem who are Jewish who have contributed here. I also want to mention that Jewish people come in all colors and shapes, we represent all different views. I used to joke that one of the owners of Adia's was the darkest-skinned person in Salem. She was an Ethiopian Israeli Jew. And for people who have doubted my Jewishness, I went to St. Paul's School when I was 12 years old, a boarding school. I was the only Jew in the school, and the seniors did a little musical where they talked about flying kites, kikes. And I asked my mom what a kike was, and when she told me, I actually went up and sped at one of them, and they dragged me behind the chapel, and they knew I was in the advanced piano class, and they put me on my stomach, and they stomped on my thumbs until the ligaments were broken. And it made me think about how much I needed to be friends with them. And for people who don't know, in 2011, in this city, I was a victim of a hate crime. I'm going to commend Counsel Prozinski for basically saving my life. And the person, the aggressor, Mr. MacGyver, was one of the few people in the history of our Commonwealth who has ever pleaded guilty to a hate crime. And he pled guilty to two felonies, a threat to commit bodily harm and a hate crime. And I was asked to speak to the No Place for Hate Committee, and I became the chair for nine years. And my intent and the intent of the committee, which is now the Human Rights Coalition, was to combat prejudice wherever it is in our community. And I do not believe it's appropriate for us to put a resolution in front of this council that divides our city for political reasons. I stand up with all Jewish people in our community and everyone else in our community to recognize Jewish-American heritage and the contributions that Jews make to our community and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cohen. I think I went out of order there. Counsel Cohen had a motion for an amendment. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Watson felt, under discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, so on the amendment by Counselor Cohen...
Amendment.
Yeah, on the amendment. On the amendment by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Onto the resolution, any further discussion? Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I am so deeply appreciative of Counselor Cohen's amendments to this order tonight, the resolution. And I also want to thank him for telling his personal story, and I also want to thank him for centering Salem residents and our immediate community in his comments. And I want to thank him and everyone in here who has historically stood up for inequality and frankly, the First Amendment. And though we are a non-bipartisan body, I think it would be incredibly insensitive to support this resolution, which I do, without acknowledging a couple of other things going on in our community, because there is pain here on all sides. And I think that it's incredibly important to acknowledge that I am happy to support this resolution. I am also sorry that we did not have a resolution for Arab-American Heritage Month last month. I think that we live in a time, unfortunately, where people struggle with making space for multiple things to be true at the same time. And it can be true that we support our Jewish neighbors in our community and all over the world, and we do, and I do. And I can also be personally opposed to the activities of the Israeli military. I can be opposed to violent oppression and the restriction of resources and the humanitarian crisis taking place in Gaza right now, and the pain that it is causing our Arab friends and neighbors, and the pain that it is causing other indigenous people around the world, and the pain that it is causing, I think, you know, unfortunately, all of us to sit and try very helplessly to know what to do about it. At the same time, I think that the Jewish faith is an incredibly beautiful and special and important part of the entire history of the entire world. Both of those things can be true. Both of those things are true for me personally. And I am happy to support this and our Jewish neighbors, and thank them for the thousands of years of incredible work and contributions to the modern world in which we now live. And also, not let this support pass without acknowledging that I and a number of other people I know in our community and our Arab neighbors are struggling. And by the way, that includes members of the Jewish community, who are also struggling with what's happening abroad. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and I want to express my deep appreciation to Counselor Cohen and Counselor Watson felt, and echo what they said. You know, sharing your personal story and your perspectives, I'm not even going to attempt to reiterate it as well as both of you did. And I really want to say I also appreciate recognizing our Salem community members, both past and present. And I do also support the edits made, including to the points that Counsel Watson felt made, eliminating the section about academic settings. And also, I have heard from some residents since this landed in the agenda, which some had reached out before I had seen it yesterday, expressing concern about the timing of the resolution and how some of the language could come across as pushback against protests, which it is not its intent, its intent, it is not. I'm going to defer to how my counselors spoke to the intent of this. And I think the edits that have made have helped clarify that intent, and recognize and respect the concerns, and support our Jewish-American neighbors here with this. And thank you.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Again, deep appreciation for everyone that has already spoken. The rise of antisemitism across the country is horrific, disgusting, unacceptable. My family always understood the importance in educating me about my own Jewish ancestry and making sure that I understood what it meant that I had two family members that were killed in the Holocaust. When my mom married my stepmom, who along with her two daughters are practicing Jews, it gave my beautiful mixed family an opportunity to reconnect with a heritage and a culture and practices that we didn't necessarily grow up practicing, but that we really had a deep appreciation for. And that appreciation grew. The horrific incident that happened at the Pittsburgh synagogue happened a couple blocks away from where my stepmother grew up. So my family and I understand what antisemitism is, and we also understand what it is not. And I think it is very important to be very clear that it is not an example of antisemitism to speak out against a right-wing government for which the actions you do not agree with. It's important to point out that it is not antisemitic to speak out against what has clearly become a genocide against the Palestinian people. And I think it's important, as a body, that we have a deep appreciation and protection of the First Amendment and the right of those, not just on college campuses, but in all instances, of their right to speak out against what is wrong. The part of Jewish culture is understanding that the long history of Jewish people being on the front lines of the movement towards peace. Another thing that my family, and my mom in particular, made sure that I had a deep understanding and appreciation for was exactly that. And when we don't have that appreciation, instances like what happened at Kent State happen. So this is very serious, this is very important. I have a deep appreciation for this resolution, but I also believe that it is very important to be clear in our language and clear about what we are trying to get across, because language can get really murky really quickly on this issue. So yes, we are condemning antisemitism. We also understand that the right of every people to live in peace, and the right of those for the freedom of protest. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. And I won't step down from the podium, but I also want to acknowledge Counselor Cohen's work he put into this here, and appreciate him. On the adoption of the resolution as amended, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Marcelo?
Yes.
Counsel Prozinski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the resolution as adopted, we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed, and one absent, the matter carries. Committee reports. Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem and City Council May 23, 2024 ordered that the City Council discuss the redesign of the city seal, and that the matter be referred to the Government Services Committee.
And the, I guess, yeah, it's a late file. So on Counsel Varela's late file, I guess that goes straight to committee. I guess there's no vote taken on that, so.
Co-posted.
Co-posted. So it is referred. Do we have to vote on it still?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Second.
Any opposed? The matter carries. Seconded by Counsel Merkel, in case anyone's wondering. Committee reports. Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President. The City of Salem and City Council, May 23, 2024, the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 12, Section 2, building, electricity, and plumbing regulations relative to additions, provisions relating to fees, has considered said matter and would recommend approval for first passage.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President. We had a pretty good meeting before this, where the electrical, building, and fire department heads presented their breakdown of how much it costs them to... Counsel Harvey has recused.
Counsel Harvey has recused himself.
Their breakdown of how much it costs them to provide the services for permits and things, and therefore, supporting the increase in the fees.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation for adoption for first passage, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President.
Counsel Varela has recused himself.
And Harvey's back?
No. City Council...
Counsel Harvey's back.
No, he's not.
Okay.
City of Salem and City Council, May 23, 2024, the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 14, Section 40, fees for granting permits and certificates by head of fire department, has considered said matter and would recommend approval for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries.
permits and certificates by head of fire department, has considered said matter and would recommend approval for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. I'm sorry. Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President. On this one, I have to make three minor amendments that came out after the meeting because the backup materials for the cost of providing the fees did not match what the fee was. So there are three minor ones, though. The first one, it says, it's at the top of, I think, the second page of it, includes review of fire alarm system project 25,001 to 52,000 square feet. The proposed change was to $300. The new charge is $165. Right below that, the one includes review of fire alarm systems project 52,001 or more square feet in addition to hiring a city-authorized independent consultant. The fee proposed was $500. It's being changed to $325. And then finally, a couple below that includes plans review, site inspections, and witness of acceptance test of projects 52,001 or more square feet in addition to hiring a city-authorized independent consultant. The proposed fee was $500. That's being changed to $330.
On the amendment, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Watson felt. On the amendment, all those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment carries. On the recommendation, any further discussion? No further discussion. So on the recommendation for adoption for first passage, as amended, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Morcello.
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, May 23, 2024, the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 12, Building, Electricity, and Plumbing Regulations, Sections 163, 164, and 165, relative to electrical fees, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all is in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
This is, no further discussion.
On the recommendation for adoption for first passage, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Stott. Counselor Harvey has rejoined us, and Counselor Varela has also rejoined us.
City of Salem, May 23, 2024, offered the following report for the Committee on Community and Economic Development, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom it was referred the matter of discussing an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to public guides, Chapter 40, Section 27, application requirements, Section 28, contents badges, Section 30, prohibitions, Section 31, revocation, and has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage as amended.
On acceptance of the report, all is in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So we had a lengthy discussion in committee on Monday night, which was great. We had a lot of feedback received. I appreciate all of the public guides within the city and all of the counselors as well, and those from the departments within the city that provided their feedback on the amendments that were needed. These amendments stemmed from feedback received during, or feedback received based off of haunted happenings and our tourism. The number-one piece of feedback, or a very large piece of feedback, was public, or large tour groups around the city and their impact to residents. So these amendments were submitted by the mayor for us to review, to kind of help put some guardrails around the guides and also to cover the amount of work and effort that it takes to manage these licenses and guides, as well as enforcement. So the largest piece of feedback that I know I have received is that we do have existing guide rules and regulations, but they are rarely, if ever, enforced. In order to enforce these, though, we do need personnel and staff to do that, which costs money. Our current applicant, or our current license fee is, I believe, just $25. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Ten. It's $10. And we have year-to-date 173 licensed public guides around the city that can do tours up to 40 groups of people that have current regulations that they have to follow and requirements that they have to follow, but it is extremely hard to enforce. So this increase of fees, as well as amendments that we made around our requirements, are to help with that enforcement. This specific committee order, though, the first one that we have in front of us, were the amendments to the ordinance section around applications, the badges, and the other various sections, so not quite fees and penalties yet. So I'd just like to quickly go through the amendments that we made in committee, which were all sent out to you this morning, the final draft. Three of the amendments were voted on in committee. Three of them are being presented this evening because the city solicitor drafted feedback for us to review. So the First Amendment is around application requirements and exemptions. This was submitted to us. It essentially removes the examination requirement that is currently in our ordinance, which we do not do as current practice today. So we're straightening that out. We're also removing the fee section, because we're adding that separately. We're adding a new line about for licenses effective January 1, 2025, which adds tiers for license types. So there will be three tiers of licenses now, one being tours up to 10 participants, the second one being tours 29 to a maximum of 40 participants, not including the guide. And then also, public guides using a wireless communication system rather than a personal PA system shall be eligible for a discount, which is provided in the next amendment. And then for licenses effective January 1, 2025, and thereafter, each applicant shall complete a safety and compliance training offered by the Salem Police Department prior to the issuance of the license. So this is one of the amendments that came out after our conversations in committee. I believe you should all have a copy of this in front of you. This is E in Section 40-20. So we're adding the timeline of it, so it will be for licenses effective January 1, 2025. And we're also adding that the license will not be issued until the training is complete. The other amendment that we made after committee meeting is in Section 40-20, contents of badge. And we're including that the words license guide, number of license, and then effective January 1, 2025, the badge shall also display a placard or decal issued by the city indicating the tour size. Additionally, in the prohibitions, we had a lot of conversations around those that were presented from the mayor's office, one of which was stricken in its entirety. So there was a new prohibition submitted to council that would essentially limit tour guides meeting up with each other, not within 25 feet. There was a lot of good conversation around that. How could it be enforced? We already have existing ordinance rules around not blocking a public sidewalk, things to that effect. So we struck that in its entirety, and that is now removed. We added additional language for prohibition number three around crossing the street, making sure that it already said a route other than a designated crosswalk or failed to utilize a pedestrian crosswalk signal when available. So again, this isn't the negative. It's a prohibition. We want to make sure that they do use activated crosswalk signals when available. And number eight, under prohibitions, this is the number that limits amplification on particular streets, and we added ocean av between Summit and Shore avenues. That was a voted amendment in committee and strongly encouraged by the WordFi at-large counselors. We also voted on the, I'm sorry, we also did not make any changes. I'm sorry, I'm going back. The city solicitor provided new language for us, which is number 11. This was feedback originally. It said, conduct a tour no more than 40, but that doesn't make sense, because they might have a license that only is allowed for 10 people. So the new language that she submitted was conduct a tour with more participants than the number allowed on the guide's license. And then finally, we have another kind of tightened-up that training compliance issue of conduct a tour. Again, this is a prohibition. They cannot conduct a tour after January 1, 2025, without first completing an annual safety and compliance training offered by the Salem Police Department. So this is the prohibitions in summary that we are changing. Section 40, revocation and penalty, we have added the language, or we are agreeing with the language that was submitted, around the violation for a licensed person is immediately referred to City Council for a hearing. So that was also discussed, similarly to how taxi operators are submitted. So those, that's in summary to the items in the first order that we have in front of us.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation for adoption, first passage as amended, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Stott.
City of Salem, May 23, 2024, the Committee on Community and Economic Development, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom it was referred the matter of discussing an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 14, Section 38, fee schedule for public guides, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all is in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So this is the next part of the amendments that we discussed related to the actual fees themselves. So currently, our public guides pay a $10 fee for their license, and we are requesting to amend that to a tier structure, starting January 1, 2025, for groups, per minute group size 10 or less, to be 150; per minute group size 11 to 29, 250; and per minute group size 30 to 40, $350, with a wireless communication system discount of $50. The fee schedule was also discussed in length. It is a large jump from $10 to, if they go all the way up, $350 or $300 with the wireless communication system discount. It's a large jump, but as we are learning and as we already talked about this evening, they have, the fee has not been raised in a long time. This ordinance was put into place in 2006, and I believe it was 20 or so licensed guides that were licensed that year, and now we're up to 176 this year. We reviewed the expenses and the revenues within the current fee system and the new fee system, and a lot of its estimates, because we're not quite sure what tier the public guides are going to apply for, but we do know how much it costs to process the applications, the training, create the badges. It's a lot of work and a heavy lift, and that has a cost to it, as well as the enforcement, which is put into our budget as a line item as well.
Any further discussion? Counselor Harvey.
Yes, as far as the fees go, I agree that the industry should be carrying itself, but I just don't agree with the large jump this, right away, because past administrations didn't follow up on it. And I understand where Mr. Pangala, yeah, where Mayor Pangala was going with this, is to try to make sure that the industry pays for itself, but I just feel it should have been done in a few increments, so it's not so hard hit all at once because of the lack of our city not paying attention to what's going on. That's all I got to say about that.
Any further discussion? Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Like I said in committee, we've got to rip the Band-Aid off. Unfortunately, this is a large jump in fees. However, it's been 18 years, and we have some catching up to do. We've become a more popular destination for tourism, and, you know, we have to be mindful of our residents here, also be mindful that, you know, a lot of businesses here that operate with significant overhead pay more in fees as well. So I feel like this is appropriate. We have to move forward, and we can always make adjustments later. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I did appreciate that we got a financial breakdown of exactly where the funds would go, how they are needed for better enforcement, which is needed, and obviously, $10 is too low. But as I've expressed before, it just doesn't sit well with me. It's not best financial practice that something goes for years and years with no increase, and then, so then all of a sudden, it jumps by hundreds. I just think we need to have better financial practice and incremental, you know, stay on top of things and have incremental increases. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Although I do agree that this should have happened over time, and the administration is committed to doing that in the future, one of the public comments that was made by one of the tour guides was that, hey, we can't control how many people are on the tour. You know, if you go to a tour at the Pem or anywhere else in the world, and there's 20 people out on the tour, and 21 people show up, or 250 people show up, they tell the extra people, hey, you need to wait an hour or two hours and go on the next tour. And the reason I bring that up is because, you know, they all admitted, the people did comment in both sessions, is that they, in season, they regularly are hitting the 40 person, and that almost everyone will apply for a license for 40 people. And let's say at the smallest amount, a tour is $25, and there's 30 people on the tour, that's $750. And this idea that, as Counselor Harvey said, that it, that the, you know, that the rest of Salem shouldn't be paying for, you know, something that is generally from people who come from outside of the city. I mean, I've been on tours in the city. The food tour is awesome, and I used to go on Jim McCall's tours quite a bit, but I do feel like it's more reasonable than just a jump in price. And we can't regulate how many tour, walking tour guides we have. And I do feel like there was a perception or something that they were trying to convey to us, that all the tour guides are perfect, they all act the same, they all act in the same behavior. And I think a lot of the tour guides are terrific, but a lot of them do not respect the sidewalk and people trying to get by and are argumentative with people when they're confronted. And so I'm going to vote for the, for it as it is. Thank you.
Counselor Proznyuski.
I think the public should know that during the committee meetings, it was brought to our attention, that the taxpayers are basically baking up, are backing up the tour guides to the total of about $55,000. That means that the tour guide business is being backed by our taxes, and that shouldn't be so. So this increase basically level funds it, so that our taxes aren't backing up a private industry. Thank you.
Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I echo the comments made, all of them here tonight, although I am supporting this. I think that in addition to the number of creative ways that this money can be made in advance of the January 1 start date, we also are enabling seven months, which is really a full tour season. I mean, we've been seeing tours all year round. So seven months of notice to raise these funds in any which way a business owner seems fit. If it were me, in a tourism economy particularly, and not a small neighborhood business, I would simply increase my ticket price, which is already a common occurrence for these companies in October. We relatively frequently see a ticket price change between March and October, right? So in my mind, this is doable. I absolutely agree with the concerns raised. I absolutely understand the discomfort. I absolutely agree that from best financial practices, this is not something we should make a common occurrence, although tonight is a rare exception. I think we're seeing some very real catch-up on behalf of this administration that unfortunately is really necessary, right, in order to relieve the burden on taxpayers in a lot of different areas. I wholeheartedly support this. I'm so glad that the timing enables these small business owners seven whole months to figure out how to make this money work for them, and I appreciate all of the public engagement and the conversations, and thanks for everyone for taking the time.
Further discussion? Seeing none. On the recommendation for adoption for first passage, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem, May 23, 2024, offered the following report for the Committee on Community and Economic Development, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom it was referred the matter of discussing an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 1, Section 10, non-criminal disposition of ordinance violations, penalties for violations of Section 40-26, public guide licenses, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all is in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. To close this out, this was the third item that was reviewed by committee. No changes made, as submitted. This essentially increases the fines to max fines—
This essentially increases the fines to max fine allowable by ordinance is 300. So the first offense would be a $100 fine, second offense 200, third and subsequent 300. And we were also adding in fire, health, and building inspectors for enforcing personnel. I just want to note that while this was being discussed, we also had a member from the Salem Police Department join us, Sergeant Paul, as well as the city solicitor. And it was noted that warnings were usually issued for first offenses, so we're not going right to fining and ticketing. We are hoping to, you know, teach and learn. Hopefully, they know it, though, with this new safety training that we will be providing. But again, this isn't, you know, a fee grab, but we do need to have some mechanism in place to enforce these.
Any further discussion? Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'd like to just take a moment to talk about some of the messaging we heard from the tour groups that came in here. And by the way, the folks that have come in and made public testimony are by and large also the folks who I think are looking to be earnest partners in our community for the most part, and I think that they have, you know, they're the ones in an association. They're the ones who communicate with one another. They're the ones who come in to all the public meetings we have, or meetings with the mayor about how best to collaborate on these matters. So I think it's important, the point that Counselor Cohen made earlier, that these tour groups, kind of, these companies all come in different shapes and sizes. And I think that these penalties are really, really important for the folks that are not members of our community, who are not, you know, even Massachusetts-based businesses, if we're being honest, who come in predominantly in September and October only. They're a pop-up business. They're looking to make a buck. A lot of the time, the accuracy of their tours is highly questionable, and they disappear again. And I think unfortunately, those folks have no skin in the game vis-à-vis being good community partners and good neighbors. And so unfortunately, I think sometimes it's imperative that we increase enforcement. That's generally well acknowledged. I think it's also important that we show folks that we're very serious about these violations, and so I appreciate these increased prices.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the recommendation for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Prozniewski.
Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, May 23rd, 2024. The Committee of the Whole to whom it was referred, a matter of hearing presentation from the Department of Planning and Community Development regarding smart growth zoning overlay districts, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40R, and H-DIP has considered said matter and would recommend the presentation be received and filed.
Counselor Hapworth moves that this be received and filed. Any discussion?
Acceptance of the report.
Seeing no discussion on acceptance of the report. All those in favor?
And then on the recommendation. So this is 40R, and H-DIP, we discuss the benefits to the city and to affordable housing. 40R encourages dense residential mixed-use development in specified areas near transit or in downtowns, provides financial incentives to municipalities that adopt it, and H-DIP offers tax incentives to property owners and developers who create a new multi-unit residential housing in targeted areas with the aim of revitalizing neighborhoods and increasing affordable housing stock. So this has potential impacts on South Campus, Life Bridge, Shetland. There's just an information meeting that we had with the planning departments to better understand these tools.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Communications from city officials.
The city solicitor submitting an order relative to exemptions to Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be adopted.
Counselor Davis moves for adoption. Under discussion.
No discussion.
Any further discussion on the motion for adoption? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from city officials.
We have a letter from the Health Agent and the Police Chief to install video surveillance cameras at various locations.
Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be adopted.
Counselor Harvey moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Speaking with Dave Greenbaum from the Health Department, there's some various locations where they want to install permanent cameras to stop people from just dumping, and there's more to come. The list right here. I agree with it. I think it's a good thing because, you know, somebody's got to be accountable for the stuff they're just dumping on the side of the road. So that's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Murstola.
Thank you. I will agree with that. One of these areas, First Street and Whalers Lane, Traders Way, that area, there's, time and time again, there's furniture that's dumped there. It's so far out of the way. There's no eyes on it. Nobody knows until it's already done. And it's just, I mean, I'm glad that they're going to try to use a camera to kind of end the behavior. I wish them well with that endeavor, though.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel.
Yes, thank you, President Hapworth. I'm also glad to see this come in and get on the enforcement for the illegal dumping. And I will just also mention that the security cameras record video feed only, not the audio. I just think that's helpful to know.
Any further discussion on the motion for adoption? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Petitions. Counselor Prozniewski -- I'm sorry, petitions.
We have a request for road closure in Willow's Neighborhood from Chevelle Ave from Hosmer Street to Beach Ave and Beach Ave from Juniper Ave to Bayview Ave on July 4th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the Willow's Neighborhood to hold the parade and festivities.
Counselor Prozniewski.
I move that this be granted.
Counselor Prozniewski moves this be granted. Under discussion.
This has been a long historic tradition in the Willow's Neighborhood. On the Fourth of July, they block off that whole neighborhood and have quite a large block party that is always very festive, and I hope everything runs, they have good weather this year, too. So I just wish them well.
Any further discussion? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I just want to confirm that the hours are 10 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Counselor Prozniewski, are you able to confirm that the hours are 10 a.m. to 8 p.m.?
Yes, yeah, the roads will be blocked from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. That's what they do historically. Correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to grant the road closure request for the Willow's Neighborhood. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have a letter from Alan Diefenbach requesting the banning no-knock warrants, including he included a draft ordinance.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Murstola moves this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Under discussion.
Thank you. Just briefly, the city clerk did run this by the police chief, and his reply was that they already follow this. But, you know, at some point during the year, we will bring Alex in to talk about why he feels that this is important and to have the police chief also a part of the discussion.
Any further discussion? Counselor Verla.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Through you to the chair, and if you don't have an answer to this question, I completely understand. Is it already baked into Mass. General Law that no warrants are allowed?
It is.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counselor Murstola's motion to refer to Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have the following license applications for limo, taxi cabs, public guides, taxi operators, and vehicle for hire.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counselor Murstola moves these be granted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have the following license applications for junk dealer and sea worms.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Murstola moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have one claim.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Murstola moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have one drain-laid contract operator license.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that this be granted.
Counselor Murstola moves this be granted. All is in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have one drain-laid bond.
Counselor Murstola.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs in return approved.
Counselor Murstola moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs in return approved. All is in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Prozniewski -- I'm sorry. Counselor Murstola.
Point of personal privilege.
Counselor Murstola requests a point of personal privilege. Seeing no objections.
Thank you, President. I would like to take a few minutes to thank Dustin Luca for his professional, respectful reporting of all things Salem in the Salem News. Dustin is leaving the Salem News after 11 years, I think? 10. 10-plus, I think, anyways, to take a role of Associate Director of External Communications at Salem State University. I truly believe that we can't have a functioning, transparent government without the press. I may not always appreciate the tone or point of view or focus on a particular viewpoint that is often found in a local paper, not necessarily you, Dustin, but the necessity of the press cannot be overstated. For a few of us, our tenure on this council began with COVID. Dustin was always a member of our virtual audience, covering the meetings live over social media. And who can forget the famous photos taken during a particularly long contentious meeting early in our Zoom days? A note to my colleagues, if council meetings go past 11 p.m., there is a real problem, and one which I hope we have addressed through our rules. Dustin will be missed for his election night spreadsheets, something that many residents have come to rely on. But he will also be missed as a regular presence at our meetings and at city events that he's covered. I look forward to seeing press releases from him from Salem State, and I know we will see him at Salem State University events. And I ask for the council's approval to send a city seal to Dustin in appreciation of his coverage of Salem News and events for the past 10 years.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and Counselor Murstola for putting that through. Dustin and I have a long history, a lot of quotes, and mostly quoted me properly. But I will say this. One of the first things that Dustin said to me when we were talking about a heated issue about 10 years ago was that his intent was to be a reporter and not a journalist. And I don't know anyone at any level in the news media who has really adhered to that more than Dustin. I think his intention is always to reflect what happened in the space. So I think we all consider Dustin a friend, and I look forward to seeing him around.
Thank you. For a long time, when I was on Twitter, I spent so much time in Dustin's Twitter account following city council meetings that I think Twitter assumed he was the biggest influencer that I could ever imagine because all Dustin's tweets would show up on my front page at all points. So thank you for all the reporting that you did, Dustin. Counselor Prozniewski.
10 years ago, when Dustin started, I was the Public Information Officer for the Salem Police Department, and in walks in this young rookie reporter who I don't know had any experience before doing it, but his knees were knocking, he had his notepad, his hands were shaking. And we welcomed him as part of the new staff to come in and try to be as transparent as possible. We found Dustin to be very inquisitive, as any young reporter should be. He asked great questions. Sometimes they were out in left field, but they were spot on. And he put his mind to his pen, and he did the right thing. And I've watched him grow as a reporter. His reporting has gotten fine. I wish, I know it's going to be our loss, Dustin and Salem State is getting a fine employee. I hope you use your skills and everything you've learned over the years to educate now. So congratulations. Thank you for all you've done for the City of Salem and for the Salem Police Department.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I would be remiss not to thank Dustin, and especially his Twitter feed, once that was brought up. I think Dustin is the only one that my mother knows what Twitter is because of Dustin's Twitter feed during the infamous trial. It just speaks to the ability to communicate out at a rapid pace information. And while we may not agree, or I don't always love every article that was written by you, I definitely appreciate the ability and the desire to share that information and get it out with the community because that is definitely what's needed. And my mom definitely appreciated it, too, she'd get the updates during the trial. But it will be definitely a big hole in community journalism. You have left big shoes to fill. I hope now, though, that you continue the spreadsheet because you like have to now. That's yours, right? And looking forward to seeing you at Salem State events.
Didn't even think about the spreadsheet. Counselor Verla.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Dustin, thank you so much. Your reporting has really helped me early on, especially just listening to what's going on in the city. Your writing is so, just so easy to read and listen to to see what's going on in the city. You will be very missed, and there's nobody replacing you. So thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Counselor Prozniewski.
And with that, I move --
We got him on TV there. Good. They got the angle. Counselor Prozniewski.
With that, I move for a German.
Counselor Prozniewski moves for a German. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Go Celtics.